The March meeting of the Lamoore Planning Commission. Time is now seven oh one, I'll call the meeting to order, but before going directly into the meeting, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so now officially call the the meeting to order and follow up with the roll call. Dan, you want me to do the roll call, Christie? Yeah, alright. Commissioner Burr?
Here.
Commissioner Clint?
Here.
Commissioner Couch?
Here.
Commissioner Hachigong?
Here.
Commissioner Franklin?
Here.
Commissioner Day is here, and then will the record please reflect that Commissioner Mead is now with us this evening? And so the next item is public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction to the commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for the commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution to the commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda once the item has been called and the chair opens the item to the public. So at this time, is there any comment from the public? Anything come in online or through emails, Christie? Okay, so moving forward, we'll go into the approval of the minutes from the special meeting from February twenty third, twenty twenty two. Has everyone had an opportunity to look through the minutes?
I'll move to accept the minutes presented.
Second. Second. Top of motion in a second. Commissioner Hachigong?
Hi.
Commissioner Clint?
Hi.
Commissioner Burr?
Hi.
Commissioner Couch?
Hi.
Commissioner Franklin?
Hi.
I vote aye as well. Commissioner Clint? And that takes us to item number five. This is a public hearing in regard to the annexation number twenty twenty one dash zero three, pre-zoning number twenty twenty one dash zero three tentative subdivision map track nine thirty five, planned unit development number twenty twenty one dash zero one and major site plan review number twenty twenty one dash zero seven. A request by Lennar Homes for five approvals to develop a one hundred and forty eight lot single-family residential subdivision, a total land development of thirty point three acres with total annexation of four point three acres. The project site is located on the east side of eighteen and three quarters Avenue, otherwise known as Liberty Drive, north of Hanford Armona Road, APNs zero two one dash five five zero dash zero zero one, zero zero two, zero zero three, zero zero four, and zero zero five. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act.
Steve, thanks, sir.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioner, Steve Brandt, City Planner. This item is a package of permits that would allow the construction of a hundred and forty eight lot, single-family subdivision. The commissioner described the location, it's on the east side of eighteen and three quarters Avenue, north of Hanford Armona Road, north of the, what is track nine twenty, another Lennar subdivision that you approved a couple of years ago and is and is under construction right now. The site, there's two parts to this, it's a two-part site in that there's five APNs or five parcels being annexed. Only three of them are part of the development. So this project required a number of conversations with different parties. We first went and met with Lafco staff about the annexation and how that would work because originally the the two southerly parcels owned by the Cabrera family were not part of the annexation and Lafco said they did not, they probably would not support an annexation that left those unannexed because of the the way that that would, that the boundary would go. And so at that point, Lennar started conversations and the city joined in at some point with the Cabrera family about whether they'd be amenable to annexation. And after negotiating some things that Lennar has agreed to to make improvements to along the frontage there in front of their home and their properties, the Cabrera's have agreed to annexation and there is a signed consent form in the city clerk's office that will present to the the city council showing that they're in support of it as well. The seller of the land to the to Lennar is obviously also in support of the annexation. So so all five properties, we have signed consent forms for annexation. The 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 northerly three properties are the only three that'd be part of the subdivision. So that's why it's, that's why the report says forty acres to be annexed, thirty acres to be developed. The development project is one hundred and forty eight single-family homes. There'll be a onsite ponding basin. There's no open space proposed or or parks proposed and so the full in-lu fee for parks fees will need to be paid. There's a conceptual in your packet on page four that shows how the Cabrera site, if it were to be annexed in the future or if it were to develop in the future, could be connected to connect this proposed subdivision to the track nine twenty subdivision to the south. The Cabrera's have indicated they want to keep farming. We also talked to the County Ag Commissioner's Office to see if there was any issues with them continuing to farm, given that they'll likely soon be surrounded on three sides by homes. And they said as long as they keep doing farming the way they're doing it now, they can, they can continue. The the, one of the projects in the package is also a planned unit development. This is because the lot sizes proposed are less than seven thousand square foot minimum. The lot sizes range from, let me get back to that, as small as four thousand three hundred twenty square feet to a maximum of ten thousand six hundred eighty-four square feet. The, and then the applicant has proposed setbacks that are modified from the standard. These setbacks are actually the same setback standards that you approved for another Lennar project by West Hills College track to eight forty-eight. I think that was last year. So it'd be ten feet in the front to living space, twenty feet to a garage, five feet on the sides, and then ten feet in the rear if it's a single-story home, fifteen feet if it's a two-story home. The applicant had submitted a set of home plans for you to review and approve, but some changes that happened just today. We talked, they wanted to make some changes, we talked this over and decided the best way to handle it would be for them to withdraw the home plans at this point and not bring those forward with the rest of the package because they want to make some changes and we didn't have time to to give a review or a recommendation to you. So those would, will likely need to come back at a later date and the applicant can talk some more about that. But were staffs comfortable bringing the rest of the project forward free to you for recommendation without the home plans, which would mean that you would not make a recommendation on the major site plan review, which is part of the, where's where the home plans are reviewed? There is one other, so so because of that, if you go down to your recommended conditions, condition number twenty-three would not be needed because we're not approving the master home plans. And condition number twenty-four, the applicant wants to propose some alternative wording and I think they'll, they can do that, they have some wording to present to you at the, when the public hearing is open. That is all I have and I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission right now?
I guess I got a question, so Steve, we're gonna be adjusting our standards for lot sizes to this being proposed forty-three twenty, that's gonna happen?
Yes, that's what's being proposed. So the the minimum standard lot size is in the, in the ordinance is seven thousand square feet. That's not been the industry standard for a while.
Okay.
And and so pretty much, and I don't think it's been, I think every subdivision project since I've been here, and I think it's been, what, seven years now, has needed a PUD because of this. And so that's just the way, just the way that we handle it.
Would some down, somewhere down the line, we'd be looking at changing the zoning ordinance so that this wouldn't have to be done every time?
I would, I would love to work with you on something like that. I think that would be a good process for us to go through and I believe that the city manager is trying to find some funding where, that we can use to to do some of those comprehensive ordinance changes because there's, there's a few things that I'd like to talk to you about. Just because of some changes that have happened in the, in the state law recently.
I have a question.
Okay.
So my concern is the family that wants to continue farming.
Yes.
So it's almost as if we go back to the example of an airport and then we build a lot of houses under the flight line for the airport and then we start complaining about an airport, even though the airport was there first. So what's gonna stop ten, twelve, fifty homes saying there's a lot of dust and it's causing problems and then it causes the family to have issues that they have to deal with? You see what I'm saying?
No, that's a really good question and that's, and that's exactly why we called the Ag Commissioner's Office because I didn't want a scenario where the commission, the the Ag Commissioner pulls their permit to spray or anything like that.
Yeah.
And that was really what would I specifically asked him. And they said, they said, they said unless they change their permit, we will keep issuing the same permit because they were there first.
Yeah.
The other, the other part that comes into play is, is the county and the city have a county, there's a countywide right to farm ordinance. So there's a right to farm notice that has to be disclosed to every new homeowner and I believe they also disclose it whenever a home changes hands, not just a brand new home.
Really?
Yeah. So, so if you ever bought a home, you know, there's a big pile of things you have to go through when you're signing, that's in there in Kings County. That's the right to farm ordinance that says that, that people who were here first that were farming have the right to continue farming the way they've been farming.
So part of it with that, the family that's farming right now, part of your statement that you made earlier, are they saying they are open to annexation later or not?
They, they have consented to annexation with this project.
Oh, with this project?
They will be, they, yeah, so.
So the boundaries we're seeing.
Project moved forward, they would be annexed, they would be, they would be brought into the city.
Okay.
They just don't want to develop right now.
I got you. And they will have all the rights to farm inside city limits.
All the rights to farm.
Okay.
And as part of the arrangement, Avenue eighteen and three quarters, it'll be called Liberty once it's annexed. The, their side of the road will get built in front of their property and they'll connect to city water and sewer.
They will.
Not, not at their expense.
Not at their expense, okay. Gotcha.
Steve, I have one more question. What, what's the smallest lot that we have allowed so far?
Whoa, I would just have to guess. We might have gone down to thirty-six hundred. That might be the smallest.
So they put a doghouse on that one or?
What's that?
Did you just put a doghouse on that lot or?
Okay, very, very well thought out designed home that fits.
So we have gone smaller.
We have gone a little smaller, yes.
The Gardner Homes over by the golf course, they were, they were in that.
Those were pretty small.
Yeah, they were pretty, I remember them being.
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking of, yeah.
But these lots align with what's already going on over at West Hills, you said, what Lennar's proposing here is pretty.
These are similar to the West Hills ones, they're not, I don't think they're exactly the same, but they're, they're similar.
The existing Lennar development, I think those are like six or seven. Those lots are like at least six thousand square feet.
Yeah, and 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 it's not like every lot is forty-three hundred, that's, I mean, that's the smallest one. The, there's, there's like a minimum footprint that they need in order to meet their setbacks. I think for the, for one plan, it's forty-five by a hundred or ninety-seven or something like that, and then another one is fifty-five by a hundred. And so, so a lot of the, so on the, on the, the larger plans, your minimum lot size is gonna be fifty-five hundred square feet.
Lennar, West Hills College, you're seven thousand?
No, they're smaller.
Smaller.
Yeah.
The one that's built that's south of this, that's just south of this, those are like about six.
Those are, those I think are a little bigger, I don't remember exactly, but those are a little bigger.
Yeah.
So one of the concerns is changing the lot setbacks on the side. Let's say you have a two-story home, we take it from ten to five. So you have maybe possibly two, two-story homes, ten feet apart, which is you and me, ten floor, you know, two floors up, window to window like that. There's no fence separating or anything like that. So it's, how you doing neighbor, good morning, you know what I mean? So, yeah, is there a market for that? I mean, is there?
Um, the, I can, I'm, and I work in a lot of cities and I can tell you that the larger cities, let's say Visalia, Fresno, Clovis, they went to standard five-foot setbacks on the site a long time ago.
They did, okay.
It's the smaller cities that still, some of them still do ten for a two-story, five for a single story. So, so yes, there is a market for it. It's just a matter of, you know, when a town is, is ready to accept it. We have approved them, we have approved that before for some subdivisions and then there's some other subdivisions that have abided by it.
Any other questions or comments from the commission at this time? You've seen us, being that this is a public hearing item, I'll open it up to the public, starting at seven nineteen.
My name is Jeff Callaway, I'm with Lennar Homes and we're excited about getting another project going in in the city. I'd like to thank Steve and Christie and the staff for getting us to this point. I know we're, I kind of driving crazy trying to get here with all my questions and nuisances. One of the things, we got a little question. As Steve mentioned earlier, we want to revise condition twenty-four regarding to trash can placement. We have a new verbiage here for you to look at, but I'm not sure, is this part of the site plan or is it part of the map? We, what we would like to do on the, the condition asks us for a four-by-twelve pad to be placed for the trash cans for the homeowner to put on her. We don't do that in any of our developments, we didn't do it on nine twenty here in Lamoore. We would like the condition to conform more to the city's municipal code and this is the verbiage that we've offered here that we hope is acceptable to everybody. Yeah, you'll take time to read it or.
Basically that you're gonna do away with the pad? That, that pad, is that what you're going away with, the garbage pad?
A big part.
You're doing away with the, the pad, the pad, right?
Yeah, we want.
Taking that out?
Because the homeowner, we leave that up to the homeowner to do later on. If they want, because some of them like landscaping, some like to do their own concrete and they'll end up ripping that out and to match, you know, make their stuff match. So that's why we've kind of throttled back on, on doing that on any of our developments. And we understand, you know, we still have room and space for them to put the cans behind the fence. Yeah.
I think the whole idea of the pad came into play, I'm not sure if you were on the commission at that time, but they talked about, they thought that it would make, the people want to put their trash cans behind the gate. But I don't see that as being the answer. So I, I don't really think putting that concrete pad is really necessary.
We agree with you.
Well, and it's a cost, it's a cost factor too. I mean, if you can't force the homeowner to use it and then your, the, the cost falls on Lennar, it's, I mean, it's square footage of concrete.
Right.
It, you know, if, if, and then you talk about they rip it out, so it's just, it's a, I, I get the cost factor of it and like you say, you can't, you might, we might want them to use it, but you can't force them to.
Exactly.
So, and I, I, I've never purchased a home or been involved in a home that had a pad already there unless it was a pre-owned home and they poured one or, you know, I've poured them myself, but I've never had one come with a trash pad, so, or container pad, I guess.
Yeah, I feel like if, if they're not open the gate now, if a concrete pad's there, they're not gonna open it to any there, so. But yeah, so I'm good with this verbiage.
We concur with what Steve's staff report and do you have any questions for us?
Say here on the the front yard, it's screened from direct view, what would be, that'd be a fence I'd take screened off.
Well, we'll have.
Front yard.
It'd be offensive to gate and they, they can put it behind the fence.
Okay.
Yeah, to screen it from the public.
It's gonna be in the front yard, it says?
Yeah, front yard.
Okay.
So was that verbiage you guys pulled off, off of art from the city or?
Right, yeah.
So that, like you say, you're just, you're basically just putting back what's already in place for the city?
Yeah, we'd like to, yeah, we'd like the condition to kind of reflect the city's current municipal code for that.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, if it's our, if it's already our code, I don't see an issue.
Other than that, that's all we have. Oh yeah, and we'd like to go ahead and pull, formally pull the site plan review tonight. Our marketing team has come up with a few little tweaks to the homes, but they're, they're still gonna have the same footprint, essentially, a few little gingerbread changes and things like that that we wanna get solidified before we get it approved and we'll bring it back to you guys to look at.
Just have a quick question since you're here, when are you gonna start breaking ground on your project by West Hills?
Yeah, we've graded it.
I've seen.
Then the rains came and flooded it and then we've, we're just getting it to the point where it's drying out and then we have to do water for the pipes. It's, it's a little, that, that site's a little more complicated than our others because groundwater is so shallow. And they're working on that, this from last Wednesday, from my understanding. I didn't go by tonight, I didn't have time, I, I do some other things, but, but we are pushing forward on that. And Miami's pounding us on it, so we gotta get it done because we're behind schedule now.
Oh, we'd like to see it now.
So in a perfect world, when would you start on this project, you think?
On this one?
Yeah, now I say perfect because it never ends up starting when you want it to.
Well, you know, we don't have an annexation day because, you know, we won't submit for annexation till after the second reading on council. And we're hoping, you know, that's like June, June, July, we're hoping to get Lafco's approval and we're, we're ready to go right there, right after that. Our engineer is here and he's geared up to start the plans as soon as we know that we have a project, a viable project going and we're hoping to get, get moving on that you know, midsummer or in the summer. Once we have a project, they want us to go, go, go. Any questions?
I just want to pertain to groundwater, so being is it, this, this site is being, is proposed to be annexed from a conservation district? And I know it's, there's some language in the, the sequel report about it. Is there anything that you foresee as a developer that might be an issue in terms of future sinkage of homes or in, in maybe contamination to existing groundwater or that, that, that you have concerns about?
No, we don't. We do any mitigation that needs to be done. Another for the sinking homes, you know, we'll come in and either lime-treat the pads like we've done in other areas to make sure that, you know, they're firmed up and we rely on our soils engineer to give us their evaluation of, of what we need to do out there. As far as groundwater contamination, I don't know what, nothing that we would do would contribute to that. And that's kind of the sealed-off system that the city, the city's municipal system wouldn't, wouldn't get money from us. I think. Good.
Any other questions, comments? So being is this still a public hearing item and we're still open within public care? Is there anybody else from the, the public who would like to ask a question or raise a comment at this time? Thank you.
My name's Linda Pressed, I reside at four eight four West Spruce Avenue, which is at the westernmost end of Spruce Avenue or one house away from the Spruce Avenue access to this new development or subdivision. Chief of my concerns is we will lose our view of the west. Right now, we have a nice view of the hills, we'll lose that view. And, but even more so is the potential construction of two-story homes of which will have direct view into my backyard. And my concern is that the lot size, being that it is smaller, there's not going to be enough distance between the, a two-story structure and the rear property line such that it would make it much of a difference. And this bothers me, this, this bothers me a great deal. My other concern is that in the report that I read online, there's a lot of many, many pages given to the traffic, potential traffic concerns at Liberty and Hanford Armona Road and even as far away as forty-one, but there is not one mention made, the impact, potential impact on Spruce Avenue and Glendale Avenue, which will be accessed also into the subdivision. I think this is an important one because these are existing communities that have been here for a long time and it's a unique situation compared to some of the other recent developments that have gone in that are not ne, don't, that are not next to a neighboring existing subdivision that I just wanted to go on record in expressing these concerns and I hope that there can be a way that everybody will be comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment at this time? Do we have any, anything coming through email or? Alright, so I'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine and bring it back for discussion amongst the commission. Any additional questions or, or further questions?
I have a, I have a couple. So she touched on the, the traffic. There were, there were, there was the one thing I was wondering what's gonna happen at Hanford Armona and Liberty because that's not an easy place to get in and out of as it is right, right now and it's only a two-way stop. And she makes a good point about Glendale. If I was to move in there and I was coming from the north side of Hanford, I'd come up Glendale and go in the back way if that's going through. And that street isn't really a major artery street, it's. And that street isn't really a major artery street, it's. If you've been down that, it's just a small, narrow. Narrow street and so something would have to be done there, I would think.
Yeah, let me double check this, I think. Glendale is a collector street, just unfortunately, there's a lot of houses that front it.
It's all housing on the, on the south side of Glendale.
Yeah.
So is, do you know if the plan is to continue Glendale on? I didn't, I didn't notice whether it's in the map.
Glendale would.
It will go all the way to Liberty.
Go all the way through, so it'd be a through street from Liberty back to La Moore Avenue. It's not a collector. Okay, yeah, the. The traffic impact analysis did identify Hanford Armona Road and Liberty intersection as a intersection that would. That would fail as a two-way stop. Once this project was done, so. We've had some conversations with the city manager, that the applicant for their part is gonna be paying traffic impact fees. That would, that would cover their fair share of the cost of a signal at that location. So we're, we're talking to the city manager about starting a project where the city would use the traffic impact fee money that we've been collecting from. Lennar and other developers to put in a signal there. We know that when tract nine twenty went in during that public hearing, there were a number of people that. Asked for a signal at that location, so we, I think the staff has, has heard from the public that, yeah, it's time to, to do something there.
There, has there been any thought of a roundabout or is it even possible at that intersection? Because there's not even, there's not even crosswalks there, so you think about the housing.
Yeah.
You got Liberty Middle School there.
We would do, we would do crosswalks when we did a signal. So it would be for pedestrian crosswalks as well. Roundabout, it may be. Maybe too late since we've got three corners already developed. To fit one in there.
And I don't know how safe a crosswalk would be anywhere near a roundabout.
Crosswalks are a little harder with roundabouts. You, you, you have to know a little bit more what you're doing because they're not in the traditional location, it seems like it's easier for drivers. To catch on to roundabouts than pedestrians.
Yeah, they're usually.
Bicycleists too, bicyclists.
They're usually.
Having a harder time with roundabouts. The, the, the comment about the connection to Spruce. It's been a stub street since it was built, I, I think it's, there's always been an understanding, we, we try to connect. The interior of our, of our neighborhoods for better connectivity.
Right.
Will it increase traffic there? Probably because it's been acting like cul-de-sac. But. Will it increase it as much as, say, Liberty? No, not, not that much, because people will, people that are trying to leave the neighborhood will, will go out to Liberty.
How many homes are actually backed up to that existing community? Is it, what is it, what would it be, thirty-seven through? I guess thirty. How would that lay out? Because there's a gap there, right, that.
Where Spruce goes around.
Yeah, as the project starts to go down, it starts to pull away, because to her, I mean, to her point, I can understand. You know, you've been in that neighborhood for twenty-plus years and now you've got two-story houses looking in your backyard five feet away as to where you had farmland and open access. I mean, I. I understand what's coming.
Looks like there'd be eleven between Spruce and Glendale and then three south of Spruce.
But are those all backed up to houses or was there a gap? Wasn't there, wasn't there a gap or is it all backed up to housing? That whole, that whole backside of Lennar is up against housing all the way across?
Yes.
Some, is somewhere in there the, there's a trailer park too?
Is that down here? Is that that one there?
Yeah, so.
So, so that, the.
Is that, is that, these are two?
The app, the applicant is just informing their, their plan is to build only single-story homes on those fourteen lots.
Okay, I was gonna say that could be a suggestion.
That's their, that's their plan, that's their plan, that's what's gonna happen.
If you want to make it a condition, you can do that.
I like that. I, I would like that to be a condition for the sake of the residents on that side, just out of respect to their neighborhood. Are the, is Lennar gonna put a, are they gonna put a wall up or how, how's that gonna work up against the existing neighborhood as well?
We, the city code does not require.
So it's just be, just be standard.
When it's residential against residential, there'll be block walls on. Glendale and Liberty.
Okay.
Any plan on what they would do? For the existing, I'm assuming these homes that are backed up.
Have fences, yeah.
Have fences now, but when I buy a new home there, I'm expecting a new fence in my yard, so they, are they refencing? That entire run? Or how's that work?
I, I don't know, some, some developers put up a new fence and it's double fenced.
Yeah.
Double.
Some of them talk to the homeowners and replace a fence, yeah.
Yeah, that would be my only suggestion is making it a condition to see that that's. You know, that's a condition of the housing project, is to make sure all those houses are, are one-story on that side.
Any other questions or comments? There's no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on the side.
I think we're trying to figure out how we make the motions of with.
Mister Chair, do you want me to help repeat what I think I've heard you say?
Please.
Okay, so we. We are, the, the major site plan has been withdrawn, so that would not be part of your motion. Condition twenty-three would also be withdrawn because that's part of the major site plan. If you want to require that the homes along the east side, the fourteen homes be single-story only. You could replace that and make that condition twenty-three. And then condition twenty-four, it sounded like you were amenable to Lennar's alternative language. For the, the trash cans. So those would be the, the change, the modifications to the recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to move to adopt resolution. Number twenty twenty-two, tag zero-three, recommending approval of annexation number twenty twenty-one, tag zero-three, pre-zoning number twenty twenty-one, tag zero-three. Tentative subdivision map track nine thirty-five, planned unit development number twenty twenty-one, tag zero-one, not the major site plan review. And according to what the findings and conditions, aside from we removed. Note twenty-three and are in agreement with the new changes to note twenty-four with the pad being removed. And with the conditions to make that East Grove Homes single-story. And also to include the findings from the sequel report. I'll second that.
Alright, so Mister Franklin?
Hi.
Commissioner Atchung?
Hi.
Commissioner Burr?
Hi.
Commissioner Clint?
Hi.
Commissioner Couch?
Hi.
I vote as well.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six of the director's report.
I don't have any new business tonight, we do intend to bring the Lacy Ranch project to you. Next meeting, we do have Jeff Roberts here from Lacy Ranch tonight. But really, nothing new to necessarily report, been working hard on getting this done since our special meeting done last month, so any questions? We'll have a lot more to report next.
Thank you, Christie. And then moving into item seven, commissioner reports or requests.
Commissioner Clement, have you heard anything about Commissioner Mead?
I don't know, last time we met, he called me. And he's home. And. That itself made him feel better. He didn't tell many timelines as far as cooperation, but. He was very glad to be home, he was in good spirits and. Keep him in his prayers moving forward.
Good to hear.
Alright, no other reports from, from the commission? Just wanted to echo the same thing, was it, had the opportunity to speak with Commissioner Mead as Commissioner Clement had stated that he's back home. It's on the mend. So, you know, coming back to being honorary, you know, and so that was good to hear and just, you know, glad to be home and, and be around people and, and. Be out of a hospital environment, that's always a nice feeling. Okay, so if there's nothing else, that leaves to item number eight, adjournment, I will call this meeting adjourned at seven forty-three.